Okay, please go back to your seats. Vice Attorney James Judith. Please rise. In vocation, the Honorable Counselor John Michael Seno, followed by the singing of the Lupang Hinirang in Kagayan de Oro March.
Let us put ourselves in the Holy Presence of God. For those who are Catholic, you may now make a sign of a cross in the name of the Father, of the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord, thank you for this wonderful day. Thank you for we are here today together in order for us to tackle on issues that we could be of help to our people in the city of Kagayan de Oro. May we ask your guidance that there may be peace and harmony in this 28th City Council and everything will put into your heart, O God, so that we could deliver a service to those who are really in need. This we ask to the might in name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Let him come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day your daily bread, and forgive us our sins, as we forgive those sins against us. Do not bring us to the test, but deliver us from evil in the name of the Father. Amen.
Please be seated. Mr. Secretary, please to the roll call.
Honorable Joselyn B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer, for the First District Councilors: Honorable Agapito Roberto Giswan, Honorable Roger Jaberday, Honorable J.R. Pasqual, Honorable Aimé Rose P. Moreno, Honorable Romeo V. Calizo, Honorable George S. Go King, Honorable Jose P. P.S. Abu Junior, Honorable Melvin I. Espaça. For the Second District Councilors: Honorable Ivona Yasinib Imano, Honorable Maria Lodes Esgaani Conlee, Honorable Jolene Mercedes Elbalaba, Honorable James K. Jurif II, Honorable Ayan Mark P. Nakaya, Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas, Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atas, Honorable Suset G. Magtahas Daba. For the ex-official members: Honorable Yan Lam S. Lim, Ligan ng Mga Barangay President, and Honorable John Michael Elsano, City Escape Federation President. The rest, Madame Presiding Officer.
Corom is hereby certified. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, our councilors. Good afternoon. Our visitors are here today: friends from the media and fellow Kagayanos. May Hapon Kanatong Tanan. Related Happy Easter to everyone. You have your chicharon there that will kill you softly. Munasyan tim song sa chicharon. Killing means softly. Anyway, ano reklamo ang ka Attorney James? Masalamay man ang kalamay. Can hold down man kung chicharon? Kung kalamay nalangin mo, ha? Anyway, actually, we would like to sing a happy birthday song for Attorney James Judith. And the singing will be led by... Counselor Gurli. Sing it top top, my John. Okay. Counselor Gurli, sportsman as Counselor Gurli. Okay. Please rise.
Happy birthday to our... Uh... Ina blanc Counselor Askdam James Judith. Yes. Join me in singing our birthday song. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday, happy birthday to you. Happy golden, yes. Happy golden. Happy birthday, Counselor Attorney James Judith.
Okay. So, uh... Okay, I'd like to acknowledge Majority Floor Leader, Counselor Edgar Cabanlas. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Honorable Vice Mayor Joselyn Rodriguez and Presiding Officer. Good afternoon to the members of the 28th City Council, Kagayan de Oro, the booming city of Mindanao. Uh... First, Madam Chair, I would like to thank, uh... Police Colonel Aaron Mandia for sending and, uh... his personnel from Precinct Number One to be with us this afternoon.
Okay.
Thank you for the response of our police director.
Thank you very much.
And also thank you, Police Major Sebastian Balagu Chua Junior, which present together with men to provide security to the City Council session.
Okay, thank you very much.
I would like also to mention whether... I just, I would like to ask whether the... the Miss Chinese World 2023 is already present? Not yet, ba? Turkish?
Ah, okay.
Chinese World, uh... Miss Birje Neth Gokong Chi. Uh... She is the representative of the City of Kagayan de Oro for the Miss Chinese World 2023, which will be held in Kuala Lumpur, Malaysia.
Oh.
And she is from Bulwa. Counselor J. Pasqual being the Chairman of the Committee on Tourism, I would like to ask him, Madam Chair, to...
Herr J. Pasqual, you are recognized.
May Hapon, Madam Chair, may Hapon sa fellow councilors and everybody. Uh... Natay bisita karoon. Uh... Her name is Birje Neth Gokong Chi, or Birge for short. Is a 23-year-old Kagayanon and hails from Barangay Bulwa, Kagayan de Oro City. Munaguning Barangay baby. She recently finished her degree of Bachelor of Science in Biology and is an upcoming freshman at Xavier University, Dr. Jose Rizal School of Medicine. She is also a model under Models Association of Kagayan de Oro, at the same time an endorser and an upcoming artist in Manila. So, congratulations, han. Ananadinin mga kontrata day. She started pageantry at the age of 15 with Mutya ng Bulwa as her first pageant and first title. She joined several pageants, including national pageants such as Miss Millennial Philippines under It Bulaga and finished top 10. Miss Philippines Earth 2018, where she won as Miss Earth Philippines Water. And she is currently the reigning Miss Chinatown Philippines 2022. Oi, Counselor George. And will represent the Philippines in the Miss Chinese World 2023 in Kuala Lumpur, Malaysia. So, ang iha lang wish, Madam Chair, is any support that we can give her kay samay naman atang ilahang competition, but earlier pauntang atong support na mahatag sa ia, so that dagan pa man kayo na ang ilahang kailangan na mga sanina, preparation, and everything. So, basi pwede na to mapatawag po, Madam Chair.
Yes. I mean.
Di ba, is suspend?
Uh, move to suspend the rost to allow na the City Council.
Any second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried. Yes, a Miss...
We now request, uh... Miss Chi.
Miss Chi? Yes, please. Birje. Birge Chi. Okay.
Hello, good afternoon Vice Mayor. Good afternoon, City Council. Hello, Paul. Good evening. Good afternoon, everyone. I am Birje Neth Gokong Chi. I am 23 years old and I am from Bulwa, Kagayan de Oro City. I'm here standing in front of you hoping to ask for any kind of support as I embark on the journey for Miss Chinese World 2023 this coming May 10 to May 20 at Kuala Lumpur, Malaysia.
Okay. Smile lang mo diha, ha? The he's just asking your support. Ha? Uh, George Go King?
Madam Chair, as a parent, hindi matihi niya. I'll place my support later, nah?
Okay. Uh, probably you can go to my office also.
Thank you so much, Paul.
And those who wish to be friend with her, probably they can also help you in your trouble. So, good luck. We wish you all the best, no? And hopefully that we can help. We can help her being a Kagayanon, right? Yes, thank you very much, and more power.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Thank you so much for all the City Councilors. Have a great day, Paul.
Ah, okay.
Can we have a group picture, ma, Blum Chair?
Okay.
With the candidate?
Of course, of course.
Counselor... Bernie is asking for the picture.
For documentation.
For publicity sake.
Who wish to join me here? Grugatamam. Those who wish can come here, sa stage. Jing, Jing!
I'm so sorry for her face. She had facial cancer.
Ah, really? Counselor Romeo Calizo?
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor?
Who like me?
Okay, smile. Sure na nila. Okay. Good luck.
I will, uh... Will attend.
Jing! Thank you very much. Okay. Yes, uh, thank you very much. Let us proceed.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, our, uh, hope you, uh, for the best. I hope she will get the Miss Chinese World. Uh, Madam Chair, let's go back to the business of the day. I move to, uh, for the lifting and the suspension of the rules.
Any second. Objection? Uh, session resume? Okay, uh, hereby, resume is, nanawala ko. Uh, session resume?
Okay, so, uh, move to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous session and considering the furnishing of the copies of the minutes to the members of the City Council as reading itself.
Any second. Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move for the approval, Madam Chair.
Second. Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to dispense second final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Now, on the special report, uh, report, uh, section of this, uh, of their business, we have three reporters who signify their intention to, uh, make a special report this afternoon. First, uh, Honorable Counselor, uh, Juslin Mercedes Blabber, and she will be touching on the, on, uh, issues like playing of loud music in bars, beerhouses, weed yuki bars, restaurants, hotels, motels, and other business establishments or places of amusement between, uh, this is now the old law, between, uh, five AM, at midnight to five AM, exactly in closed and soundproof premises. That will be the gist of the report of, uh, Counselor Blabber. Second, uh, uh, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya, also made his intention to report, make a special report this afternoon, uh, on, on, uh, his observation, uh, of the Carmen Bridge. And third, a request from Coacher Rico Liso, uh, he will be, he will make some manifestation on the persistent problem of the city, of the city about water supply.
Okay.
That would be the lineup of speakers this afternoon. Show me, I move, Madam Chair, that, uh, Counselor Gurli Blabber very good nice.
Counselor Gurli Blabber, you are recognized, thank you very much, uh, uh, Majority Floor Leader, Counselor Edgar Cabanlas.
Thank you, good afternoon, Madam Presiding Officer, our Vice Mayor Bebop Rodriguez, to my colleagues, to all our guests in the gallery this afternoon and to those watching us on various social media platforms. Over the years, we have seen our beloved city progress. As a Kagayanon, we would verily say that a lot has changed, our population has increased, and much of our cityscape is no longer as it was ten or fifteen or even more years ago. We have seen the spawning of various infrastructures and, and establishments. But as we progress, our mindset must also go with it, without compromising the rights of each sector and always putting the welfare and well-being of our constituents in mind. With this, Madam Chair, we go straight to the point. The Regulatory Compliance Board, as an implementing arm of our local government unit, which works to ensure the safety and peace in the city, has been bombarded by the complaints from our constituents regarding the noise disturbance brought about by the spawning of bars and restaurants in residential areas with live bands and loud music playing until the wee hours of the morning. And I'm sure you would agree, these complaints are legitimate. For how can one possibly sleeps soundly with such loud music? The RCB is hereby requesting this August body to amend ordinance number four three seven three dash ninety-four, specifically sections six one four and six one five, which prohibits the playing of jukebox. Nineteen ninety-four pa man sin ni, jukebox pa ni. Kinahanglan nagud ni siya i-amend, siguro, nung nandeh jukebox karoon. Jukebox, radio, stereo, karaoke, video, video key and other similar devices and instruments in bars, beerhouses, singalong, karaoke or video bars, restaurants, hotels, motels. I don't know which, uh, kind of, uh, loud music are coming out from hotels. And in any other business establishments. Hilom man ang motel? Ang gawas ra. Or places of, um, amusements from midnight to five o'clock AM. That's the, um, provisions in the old law, except in closed and soundproof premises. So, we, uh, we need to amend, if, uh, you may agree with me, to ten in the evening. Make it earlier, ten in the evening to seven in the morning. So, is this reasonable and fair? I believe it is. While we do not want to deprive the rights of each individuals and businesses, we must also recognize the rights of our constituents who are deprived of a sound sleep. It is also a right. While we recognize talents through music and we all want a vibrant city with an equally vibrant economy, we must also recognize our duties to ensure that public safety, public welfare, and most importantly, public health must prevail above all else. With this, it is my prayer to move for the amendment of the ordinance or to forward this request to the Committee on Public Safety and Peace and Order for the expedient action on this matter. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Counselor Gurli Blabber. I will just give you the one thing that there is chaos, no? In this kind of situation, na kusog ang ngakwan. I would like to empower the barangay. When I was a barangay chair, permini, this is an ongoing problem, on and on and on, and until now, mahogi ako ni. So, let us empower the barangay. They have the, ano, power to close. If they will not, uh, give, if they are not give, if they are given the chance nga, muhilom sila, ugili gali. They can always close the establishment because that can jeopardize and tulog especially our senior citizen. So, dili launtak, may empower launtak barangaya, Counselor Alam Lim, that dili sila maglo, this is an ordinance. And if this is, there's a problem nga, that reklamo giyot, giyot katulog, ang mga constituents, better they do something about it, sirado eh. Dili man sila ma technical ano, because one reason why you will have this, uh, this, what you call this, kinasirado? Uh, soundproof. They can, they can do whatever they want to do, sabak kayo pero dili soundproof. As really in the ordinance, ang may tamusabag do kainna, with a karaoke, with a singing and everything. So, again, let us empower the barangay. Uggid sila muto, sirado eh, ang establishment. So, that's the only, the only way, kay, ang, ang, ang problema do kain na do kain na. Is there, ever since na na diha. Now, the problem is closing at ten o'clock. How about those nga dun nagoy, that's a soundproof? Will that make a difference now with the soundproof and non-soundproof? That, we, we have to refer to the committee, Counselor Gurli, no? On, uh, under the, uh, CTOs, under games and amusement, Counselor? Counselor Roger Abadai? A public order? Public order, okay, public order under Counselor Romeo Caliso.
And also the barangay Chairman.
Also the barangay, uh, barangay affairs, Counselor Alam Lim. Yes, a joint session, Counselor.
So, move to refer this, uh, the special report of, uh, Belabat to the committee, she mentioned by the Honorable Vice Mayor. For action.
Yes, second. Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Asadi, pagkumupadayan, Madam Chair. Salamat kay sa chicharon, yung mga crispy, matingali kain na.
Actually, kana si Counselor, kung mahimo, imanaliit, ayokan, ah, kay, muntikkaon man, atun na dito sa pinakbet. Maslamay siya sagol, pinakbet. Okay, Counselor Edgar Cabanlas, okay, let us proceed.
Let us proceed. Uh, now, the next, uh, reporter is Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya.
Okay, uh, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. Mayhapon.
Mayhapon?
Thank you also to Majority Floor Leader, uh, friends, uh, from the media and our colleagues in the council, mayhapon. Uh, pardon, two years ago, the rehabilitation of the Carmen Bridge, the Nazaret Carmen Bridge was, uh, executed and, uh, just few weeks ago, Madam Presiding Officer, uh, it was open to the motorists. And, uh, I was a bit, uh, surprised because what I recall from the original construction was the same or perhaps similarly to the original plan and implementation. And I was wondering what could have been the changes that had been made when DPWH rehabilitated the Nazaret Carmen Bridge?
Which one is that, the one, uh?
Rotonda to, uh, Carmen.
That the old, that the old, the rotonda?
Rotonda to Suwan Avenue.
Okay.
Is that correct? Counselor Aga? Anyway, uh, natingala ko kay, pariyar naman, what, what is new is the pavement, which is of course fresh from the newly constructed street.
The one that is, uh, undergoing construction, is that what you mean?
No, it's, it's already open, it, it's already open and, uh...
Kalsanan anak?
Alaka. Ang tulay, ang tulay. Ang tulay ang atong historian.
O sige.
Alin tanan ni mga naglikota? Anyway.
Dili ka nagkalot karoon, dili naman ako?
No, 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 it's a different, uh, infra project, perhaps.
The Carmen?
The bridge itself.
Ah, okay, ah, okay, 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 that's it, okay, okay.
To Carmen. Anyway, uh, question blowing into our minds, Madam Presiding Officer, is, uh, has the planning of, uh, the, this, uh, infra project really inspires the future developers of, uh, DPWH and the city of Kagayan de Oro? And, uh, funding is of course huge. The alternate road that was, uh, open for purposes of, uh, having a route between Nazaret and Carmen because of the rehabilitation has been now destroyed or what? What should we call it? Ngano, dako, kay tunga, infra? Dayon, I don't know. Unsa kaha, kay, gabi nakalabay ko nag, akong gasukod sukuron ang weed, ugang lent, pariyar naman. Unsa igi trabaho, atun nga nung giguba, ang tulay. Sayang kayo ang pundo na wala na dapat paraunta sa, unsa pay mga developmental projects for the hinterland barangays, for example, construction of, uh, health facilities and daycare centers. But unfortunately, I don't know, it's, is it, was it misuse? W nine nahibalan sa mga engineers sa DPWH nga, one ato nahibalan. Uh, inana kaprioridad kayo uh, sa ilang pag-implement sa pundung nga dako. Then, the next question, Madam Presiding Officer, is wala may billboard na showing the, the intention of the government to, uh, implement the infra project, so we, we will never know, uh, the, the, the projects consisting uh, in the, uh, periphery or the approach of the Carmen Bridge. Uh, unsa sa ilan gihimo di na, nga no, wala man sa lateral road. That was supposed to be, to my mind, is gigubato kay tungod kay maghimug lateral roads. Entering di ko kay balon sinad, sa dalan sa Carmen, unsa bang halan na ng Carmen? Akasha Street. I was hoping, I was hoping nga, may mga lateral roads, kumu-intra dito sa right side and intra dito sa left side and entering both, both ends from Akasha to, to the bridge and the bridge to the Akasha Street. But, uh, wala. Disusigin ako, paglabaygin ako from, from, from this one property, wala'y, wala'y dipiparal para muaghi sa, sa Akasha. So, the same, original constructed road that was supposed to be, I, I, I would like to think that, uh, would have lateral roads for purposes of, uh, entering, exiting the, the bridge, Madam Presiding Officer. I ask all this query so that, uh, we will be enlightened, so that in the future there would be no case such as this if, for example, waste of money is the issue. Inanlan, we will protect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor, uh, Ian Mark Nakaya. So, please refer this to the Committee on Infrastructure, Counselor Michael Seno? Yes, Counselor?
Counselor Abadai. Would like to...
Okay, Counselor Roger Abadai, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, uh, Madam Presiding Officer, um, Vice Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor. We both, uh, Rodriguez, thank you for the chicharon. Uh, my colleagues in the 20th City Council, um, in response to the good, the good reporter, uh, if you can, if you can recall that, I think, the past administrations, during the time of Mayor Dunku, the late Mayor Dunku Imano, while that was newly built, I have, uh, rendered special report because I have heard, I learned from one of the engineers that there was depicted, uh, na dipicto dia sa, I think, the first leg, Madur. Siguro mga, na igkrak, na igkrak. Ng area dia, dininga side, dininga side, is side, jur. So, after my special report, there was a, uh, repair, under gun, the under gun repair. Kay allegedly na inagkrak dia. So, uh, wala'to kay ma, kuano? I think, I think this, there was, uh, kuano? There was a, a correction, it was done by the previous, uh, kuano? Contract, sena construct there, or, I do not know who contracted that. So, I asked the city engineers, uh, they have information that we cannot, uh, they bold, because, uh, you know? Uh, so, I think that must, that must be one of the reason why nga nung girenovit na tung tulay. Pero, masi dunapalay pa mga rason. Uh, mas may sam, nga mahimbaan sa. I think that that needs to be investigated. I, and dunapalay mahimbaan sa mga engineers nga, dunagidipicto dia, kanang pagconstruct na ngatulay. Salamat.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Roger Abadai, yes, any more comment? Napa comment?
Wala na. There being other comments, Madam Chair, may move to refer the special report.
Okay, uh, we'll be referring to the Committee on Infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
Counselor Michael Seno?
Michael Seno.
Okay.
For the committee to render a report on the report of Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya. So, our last reporter is, uh, Counselor General Romeo Caliso.
Uh, Counselor Romeo Caliso, you are recognized. Uh, Councilor Romeo Calizo, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and good afternoon to you and to my colleagues and all our guests. Madam Chair, uh, this is just a simple manifestation because uh with reference to the latest census. We have about a million residents here in the city with almost two hundred thousand households. Now, as an obstitute of uh the last meeting on the Committee on Public Utilities last March twenty nine. The committee decided that the chairman himself shall render a special report regarding the problem on domestic water. But I requested our Majority Floor Leader that instead of uh a special, special report, complete and comprehensive one. With due respect to our City Water District, the Cagayan Doro Water District. Let us give them chance to present the real current situation of uh the domestic water and what is really their plan? To provide uh what is needed to the people of, to the households in Cagayan Doro City. And so, in our initial findings, Madam Chair. Out of one hundred households, random. Almost all of the households complain about the scarcity of water supply. And this even not in the the area severely affected. So, water really, especially domestic water, Madam Chair, is now becoming a lingering problem at present and uh with the development, Madam Chair, it might become, it might grow monstrous in the future where the next generation shall suffer. And therefore, uh what is being done now by uh our barangays that they come into conduit with uh the uh, with the so many service providers. Which now complicate the problem of our water district. Because it now becomes problem of traffic, because of problem of our infrastructure development. And the the problem of supplying what, supplying the water needs of our people is not being addressed, Madam Chair. And so, it is the prayer of this representation that the management, maybe the chairman of the board of the Cagayan Doro City Water District shall be invited before the plenary and request them to present the real situation of uh the domestic water in Cagayan Doro and what is their plan? Uh, because as who knows? Is it really water district that is supposed to solve the problem? Or the local government itself shall support the water district so that the problem shall be solved? So, that's my prayer, Madam Chair, uh, with this uh simple manifestation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilor Romeo Calizo. Yes, Councilor Majority Floor Leader Edgar Cabanlas.
Uh, I think it is timely there that we should invite the uh, the chairman and the general manager of CWD to speak before us. To inform us what's really the real situation in the ground on matters of water supply. Oga importante gini, Madam Chair, kay. Especially, uki mo ng mga tagtag Francis niyan ang mga dagmay ng mga supply po, nakasakong tanon, nakatagka gubut niyo. Kasamo, kay ditubalay gani, iron. Kay dakong tuboy na kadagko. Na patangsa akong, gaya akong karsada. Sige kalidsan, there's no third day. So, now let us, maybe, maybe nalintan na to nga. Water district is own by the city government. It's us who owns this water. Why not? Solve the problem by providing them the proper assistance that they need, if there is that assistance. So, may ka na nga report, so. Uh, we will request the secretary, the our city secretary to invite uh the general manager of CWD, the chairman of the Board of Directors for a meeting here or for a.
Presentation. Yes.
Before the plenary. And we will not to, in order not to delay the proceedings, we will we will inform or the members of the city council, they may allow, they shall allow my special reports next week. Let's give priority to this uh, to this issue.
Okay, thank you very much, Majority Floor Leader. So, let us invite, no? See CSW next Monday for this uh, for queries, no? From the 20th City Council and the people of Cagayan Doro City. Anyway, let us proceed. The Majority Floor Leader, Councilor Edgar Cabanlas.
So, let us go to the business of the day. Now, there is now, there is a new procedure that will adapt this if we came today. The reading of the proposed resolutions and ordinances shall be done by our city secretary, Arturo San Miguel. Turks, and uh uh, he will be reading all the proposed resolutions and ordinances. Then after reading, I will be the one to move for approval.
The same uh, the same.
The same procedure.
Procedure that we will call the proponent.
Yes, oh yes, of course, the proponent will be hold. And uh, the one, the proponent will be the one to propose for the approval. We are following this procedure just like in the House of Congress. Where the secretary general reads all this, these resolutions to every big proceeding. Pero, di sir ko, di suka po. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Yes, 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 okay. Thank you very much.
Uh, proposed resolution one, two, three, four, and five, omnibus.
For omnibus, motion for approval is uh item, items one, two, five, considering that they are of this similar nature. Item one is proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash three hundred thirty-five. Returning to the barangay council of barangay number thirty, the city its ordinance number one dash twenty twenty-three, series of twenty twenty-three. Covering its annual budget for CY twenty twenty-three with an estimated income of three million six hundred thirty-nine thousand five hundred thirty-nine pesos. Item number two is proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash three hundred thirty-six. Returning to the barangay council of barangay Bluwad, the city its ordinance number twenty-three dash zero one, series of twenty twenty-three. Covering its annual budget for CY twenty twenty-three with an estimated income of thirty-nine million two hundred eighty-three thousand eight hundred seventy-seven. Item number three is proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash three hundred thirty-seven. Returning to the barangay council of barangay Don Solihum, the city its ordinance number one dash twenty twenty-three, series of twenty twenty-three. Covering its annual budget for CY twenty twenty-three with an estimated income of eight million six hundred forty-four thousand nine hundred five pesos. Item number four is proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash three hundred thirty-eight. Returning to barangay council of barangay Lapasan, the city its ordinance number one, series of twenty twenty-three, covering its annual budget for CY twenty twenty-three with an estimated income of forty-two million nine hundred ninety thousand and forty-one pesos. With, and item number five is proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash three hundred thirty-nine. Returning to the barangay council of barangay Macasandig, the city its ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one, series of twenty twenty-three. Covering its annual budget for CY twenty twenty-three with an estimated income of twenty-six million one hundred nine thousand two hundred seventy-five pesos. With the information that said ordinances are operative in their entirety. Sponsoring committees, all the committee on barangay affairs and the committee on laws and rules. The documents in support thereto are attached in the agenda and on file with the Sangguyan Panglusod Secretary.
Thank you very much, Turks. Uh, Madam Chair, may I request that Councilor Yan Lam Lin be recognized?
Councilor Yan Lam Lin, you are recognized.
Madam Chair, Mayong Hapon. Salamat sa'yo mong Chicharon.
Ina-hina ilan ah.
Akong kauban. Omnibus approve, uh omnibus uh resolution. Everything is in order. I move to approve uh proposed resolution number two zero two three dash thirty-five, two zero two three dash thirty-six, two zero two three dash thirty-seven, two zero two three dash thirty-eight, two zero two three dash thirty-nine.
Any second objection? I hear no motion is heard by carried.
Move to the second final reading.
Any second objection? I hear no motion is heard by carried.
Motion approved, motion approved.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, uh, item six and seven omnibus motion.
For omnibus approval, item six and seven. Item six, proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash three forty. Accrediting the Senior Santunino Farmers Association Incorporated for purposes of its membership in the local special bodies. And item seven is proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash three four one. Accrediting the Kilometer Eight Indigenous People Developing Livelihood Association Incorporated for purposes of their membership in the local special, special bodies pursuant to DILG memorandum circular number twenty twenty-two dash zero eight three and Article sixty-four Rule thirteen of the Rules and Regulation implementing the nineteen ninety-one Local Government Code or funding its budget from the city or other sources as required under the Quas circular pertinent thereto.
Move, uh, move, Madam Chair, that Councilor Ayen Mark Nakaya be recognized.
Councilor Ayen Mark Nakaya, you are recognized.
For the approval of items six and seven.
Any second objection? I hear no motion is heard by carried.
Move to approve the seed motions on second and final reading.
Any second objection? I hear no motion is heard by carried.
Item eight.
Item eight is proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash three four two. Interposing no objection to the application of Patpat Farmers Association, PATPA. For titling of a parcel of land described as cadstral lot number twenty-three eight three. Card three six nine dash D case two. Located in situ Marta Bito, barangay Lumbla, the city. Containing an area of thirty-three thousand three hundred seventy-one square meters as onsite relocation area for the actual occupants there at sponsoring committee, committee on urban and rural poor and housing development and committee on laws and rules. Documents uh in support thereof are held to attach in the agenda and on file with the Sangguyan Panglusod Secretary.
Madam Chair, may I request that Councilor Ibe Imano be recognized?
Councilor Ibe Imano, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for the approval of proposed resolution number two zero two three dash three four two.
Any second objection? Okay, Councilor Marburg Espaça, you recognize?
Mayong Hapon, Madam Chair, sa'tong mga bisita, mayong Hapon, salamat sa Chicharon. Mas gusto ka makipagbaila to ni James Jodit? Uh, wala po'y objection ani, Mr. Chair. Uh, Madam Chair, sorry, sorry, sorry. Opagay ko nakakaw Chicharon. Uh, kanila, na lang po'y na, na, nabantayan lang sa attachment, Madam Chair. Uh, sa page eighty-nine appendix Ivan. Gikan sa, kanin sa Land Registration Authority. Uh, namumudri, whom it may concern, na kata's and this is to certify that based on the recording system of the seduce tree. It cannot be asserting if not. Uh, correct me, Marburg, ang pasabutan na baka ng Marburg, delete sure kung title lago ba or delete? Uh, sorry ko na may mga bugado re Madam Chair. There was on the page eighty-five. Uh, namumupi nakita ang word re na, uh, I think sa Dinar manatani. Na, ano this, the remaining portion, third paraglot, shaded green color containing an area more or less is found within timberland. Mr. Chair, ah, Madam Chair? Uh, ako lang basin lag in the near future baka magkaproblema. Sa diba if, sa sige na ko appeal, magudong mga hearings, basta maka nuwok ko word, word nga. Timberland, Maragali, so tao, patitolo ingana. Uh, namutan na lang wala na, Madam Chair, just sige, maka kasim, maka problema lang in the near future. Dagan, salamat, Madam Chair.
Councilor, uh, Majority Floor Leader, can you answer that?
Yes, um, Madam Chair, the, you know, it's always the, I think it's the protocol of the Dinar that they will not assume that there is no title on the property. Unless somebody will uh present later on, donate property, donate title. That's just to play safe because, but as far as the records of the Dinar is concerned, there is no existing title over the subject property. Muni ilan sinutihan? Ayan na dayon, ayan na dayon. So, maging ilan tinubagan, marabag Amerikanu, bitaw nga, no denial. Uh, so, uh, so, Madam Chair. And the, on page eighty-five. Gi-identify sa Dinar which is alienable and disposable and katung which is subject to timberland.
So, delete timberland the entire lot?
Delete ka timberland kay part kinisya sa alienable and disposable. Because they will not issue the certification under request kung part kinisya sa timberland.
Councilor, yes, Councilor Arturo James Jodit, you recognize?
Madam Chair, sa'yo mo dihao sa'ko kinakagumang kauban sa konseho, ang kananda'y mga bisita na sa gallery likod gabahin sa atong uh session hall. Inana nila, uh, kunamang nalitay certification din eh, na sa panid otsintay singko sa ato baling agenda book. Atong, ang atong interposing objection, ma appeal ang kininggitawag na remaining portion shaded green color containing an area of hundred twenty-six thousand three hundred thirty-two square meters. Dapat wala say labot, dito rata magtutok sa katung alienable and disposable, wala, sige appeal. So, delete ni sa appeal. Uh, kami certification, akin nakabuta mo pong sunakoy itatao, wala, di magutang maka appeal sa timberland.
Yes.
So, wala say labot.
Wala say labot.
Ah, okay.
Di, 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 sabi ko, uh, sabi ko, power approval is only three hectares. Three hectares, rakin niya twelve hectares ni, so wala ni say labot.
Ah, so, gibo pang lang ng remaining portion din eh, para alam magat description.
Yes, okay.
Oo, para kana siya is timberland, regent.
Timberland.
Kana specific.
Anyway, okay, any more comments? Salamat. Clarification? Yes, proceed, Councilor, uh, Majority Floor Leader, Council Edgar Cabanlas. Uh, there's objection? Is pending motion, yes?
For approval.
For approval, uh, any second? Any objection? I hear no motion is heard by carried.
Move to approve on final, on second final reading, Madam Chair.
Second objection? I hear no motion is heard by carried.
So, item number nine, Turks?
Item number nine is proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash one five eight. Authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rando Aui, representing the city government of Cagayan Doro to sign the respective forms and or instruments relative to the filing of applications for the issue one of special patents and or patents in the name of the city government of Cagayan Doro with the Department of Environment and Natural Resources covering the inherent properties owned by the city to with a lot number one eight five zero three dash C under tax declaration number G dash three six four six one six located in Barangas and Simo with an area of forty-two thousand seven square meters. B lot number one eight five zero three dash D under tax debt number G dash three six four six one seven located in Barangas and Simo with a land area of twelve thousand two hundred seventy-three square meters. And C lot two zero four zero four, card three six nine dash D under tax debt G dash three three one four five two located in Barangay Lumbla with an area of seventy-seven thousand six hundred thirty-two square meters.
Uh, Madam Chair, may I request that Councilor Romeo V Caliso be recognized as vice chairman of laws and rules?
Councilor Romeo Caliso, you are recognized.
May I move for the approval of said items, Madam Chair?
Any second objection? I hear no motion is heard by carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second objection? I hear no motion is heard by carried.
Omnibus motion of these amoa resolutions, ordinances, Madam Chair, Turks? Up to item uh.
Ten to?
Item fifteen.
Item. Item ten is proposed ordinance number. Item ten is proposed ordinance number two zero two three dash one five nine, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aui, representing the City Government of Cagayan Dioro to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement, MWA, with the Bright Horizons Caregiver Training Hub and Technical School Incorporated, represented by its school president, Mrs. Georgia C. Salon, covering the under-jab training of its students, trainers under the TISDA TVET II qualification caregiving in situ at the residential care for the elder, elderly at my town, Barangay Puerto de City, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. Uh, item eleven is proposed ordinance number two, twenty twenty three dash one six zero, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aui, representing the City Government of Cagayan Dioro, to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement with the House of Hope Foundation Incorporated, represented by its chairperson of the board of trustees, Monsignor Hosi Alan P. Polgo, SSGV, covering the management and operation of the House of Hope Custodial Psychiatry Care Facility, located in Barangay Lumbya, the city, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. Item twelve is proposed ordinance number two zero two three dash one six one, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aui, representing the City Government of Cagayan Dioro, to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement with the SCK Works, represented by its president, Mr. Ferr Japo T. Furica, covering the use of Spark Artificial Intelligence Based Smart City Solution, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. Item thirteen is proposed ordinance number two zero two three dash one six two, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aui, representing the City Government of Cagayan Dioro to enter into and sign the data sharing agreement with the Office of the City Election Officer of Cagayan Dioro, City Commune, represented by Attorney Ramel P. Akol, City Election Officer Four, covering the collaboration of the parties in the sharing of data, personal information in accordance with the Data Privacy Act and the city's privacy policy, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. Item fourteen is proposed ordinance number two zero two three dash one six three, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aui to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement, MAIP for Government Partner Hospitals, with the Department of Health Northern Mindanao Center for Health Development, represented by its regional director, Dr. Hoshi Al Yakona, covering the implementation of the Medical Assistance to Indigent Patients Program in the city, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. Item fifteen is proposed ordinance number two zero two three dash one six four, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aui to enter into and sign the contract of affiliation with the Lord's College Incorporated, represented by its vice president for academic affairs, Dr. Ravina O. Mindusa, covering the internship training of its students in Bachelor of Science in Nursing, Bachelor of Science in Pharmacy, and Bachelor of Science in Nutrition and Dietetics, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein, sponsoring committees, all the committee on senior citizens, committee on social services, committee on education, uh, committee on health, nutrition and health insurance, committee on, subject, uh, committee on laws and rules. All documents in support of the approval thereof are attached on the agenda and on file with the Sangguyan Pangungusod Sekretary.
Madam Chair, may I request that Counselor Roger Abadai be recognized for item number ten?
Counselor Roger Abadai, you recognize?
I move that items, uh, mentioned herein, Madam Chair, is to be approved.
Second objection? I hear none motion is here by carried.
Uh, I, uh, may, uh, move to approve second and final reading.
Any second objection? I hear none motion is here by carried.
On item eleven, may I request that Counselor Gurli Balaba be recognized?
Counselor Gurli Balaba, you recognize?
Yes, um, I move for the approval of proposed ordinance number twenty twenty three dash one six zero.
Any second objection? I hear none motion is here by carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading, Madam Chair.
Any second objection? I hear none motion is here by carried.
Item third, may I request that, uh, Counselor Suzet Matas Daba be recognized?
Counselor Suzet Daba, you recognize?
Uh, mayhapon, Madam Chair, thank you for the chicharon. Ay, kalamay, diya chalk lang.
Toa sa iha baylo mo.
Move to approve, uh, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty three dash one six one.
Any second objection? I hear none motion is here by carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading, Madam Chair.
Second objection? I hear none motion is here by carried.
On item thirteen, may I request that, may I request that, uh, Counselor Abadai be recognized?
Counselor Roger Abadai, you recognize?
I move to approve proposed ordinance number twenty twenty three dash one six two.
Any second objection? I hear none motion is here by carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second objection? I hear none motion is here by carried.
On item fourteen and fifteen, may I request that, uh, Counselor Amy Rose Moreno be recognized?
Counselor Amy Rose Moreno, you recognize?
May I, um, I find that everything is in order and I move to approve proposed ordinance number two zero two three dash one six three.
Any second objection? I hear none motion is here by carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Any second objection? I hear none motion is here by carried.
Uh, number sixteen, torts?
Item number sixteen is proposed ordinance number two zero two three dash one hundred sixty-five, approving the alteration of plan of the terraces in Sabias State's subdivision project located in Barangay Balulang, the city, particularly blocks one, two, and three, which are portion of the saleable lots and commercial lot with a fitted area of twenty-one thousand nine hundred five square meters due to the construction of the Balulang Makasandid Access Road for certification of Deputy Valuet Region Ten, as applied for by the A Brown Company Incorporated, represented by its compliance supervisor, Joileen F. Magadan. And for this purpose, amending ordinance number one three four two one dash twenty eighteen. Sponsoring committees, committee on subdivision and land and state, and committee on laws and rules. Documents, uh, in support thereof are on file and attached in the agenda.
Uh, being the sponsoring committee, Madam Chair, I move for the approval of item sixteen, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty three dash one six five.
Any second objection? I hear none motion is here by carried.
Move, uh, move to approve on second and final reading.
Second objection? I hear none motion is here by carried.
There is an observation from Counselor Sano that, uh, item fifteen was not approved. I, I move for the, I move for the approval of the two, fourteen and fifteen.
Fifteen lang, naman ang fourteen.
Uh, fifteen, so, may I request that Counselor, uh, Balaba be, be recognized?
Anyway, Counselor Gurli Balaba, you recognize?
Madam Chair, thank you. I move for the approval of proposed ordinance number twenty twenty three dash one six four.
Any second objection? I hear none motion is here by carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Yes, second objection? I hear none motion is here by carried.
Madam Chair, may I move for inclusion of following, uh, following items in the agenda, item seventeen to, to twenty-two. I think everybody was, uh, furnished copies of the, uh...
Any second? Objection? I hear none motion is here by carried.
Uh, may I request, uh, torts to, uh, uh, read the item seventeen? Omnibus, uh, resolution, item seventeen to item, uh, item, uh, no, seventeen, uh, eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Eighteen.
Item seventeen is proposed ordinance number twenty twenty three dash one hundred sixty-six, authorizing Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aui, representing the City Government of Cagayan Dioro, to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement with the Center for Educational Measurement, Inc., Incorporated, represented by its president and CEO, Dr. Grace H. Akil, Akiling Delisay, covering the use of CEM's General Mathematics Senior High School testing program for the purpose of screening applicants to the city scholarship program, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. Item eighteen A, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty three dash one hundred sixty-seven, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aui to enter into and sign the memorandum of understanding with the Technical Education and Skills Development Authority, Region Ten, represented by its regional director, Mr. Ashari E. Banto, covering the collaboration of the parties in the implementation of the trainer's methodology, Level One Training, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. Item B is proposed ordinance number twenty twenty three dash one hundred sixty-eight, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aui to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement with the Gonzalo and Carmen Abaya Memorial Foundation Incorporated, represented by Mr. Renner P. Renupa, covering the collaboration of the parties in the implementation of the Technical Vocational Scholarship Program. Item C is proposed ordinance number twenty twenty three dash one six nine, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aui to enter into and sign the memorandum of understanding with the J Three Trainers and Consultants Incorporated, represented by Engineer Joel B. Ortiz, covering the provision of appropriate venue, space, and other necessary logistical requirements in the conduct of the human resource development programs. Item D, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty three dash one seventy, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aui to enter into and sign the memorandum of understanding with the Hotel, Hotel Eight O One, represented by Miss Nilia G. Dimissmaker, covering the collaboration of the parties for the purpose of supporting the TVI supervised industry learning for learners through the grant of incentives. Item E, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty three dash one hundred seventy-one, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aui to enter into and sign the memorandum of understanding with the C One Trading Corporation, represented by Mr. Mark Anthony S. Mofar, covering the collaboration of the parties for the purpose of supporting the TVI supervised industry learning for learners through the grant of incentives. Item F is proposed ordinance number twenty twenty three dash one seven two, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aui to enter into and sign the memorandum of understanding with the Starads Advertising Services, represented by Mr. Emmanuel Luis C. Along, covering the collaboration of the parties for the purpose of supporting the TVI supervised industry learning for learners through the grant of incentives. And item G is proposed ordinance number twenty twenty three dash one seven three, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aui, representing the City Government of Cagayan Dioro, to enter into and sign the memorandum of understanding with the High-Tech Electromechanical Sales, Sales and Services, represented by Mr. Miss Baby Healy C. Tan, covering the collaboration of the parties for the purpose of supporting the TVI supervised industry learning for learners through the provision of financial aid. These proposed memorandum of agreements, uh, are certified urgent by City Mayor Rolando Aui and supporting documents thereof are on file and attached in the agenda.
Uh, Madam Chair, I move that, uh, all these ordinances will be moved by all members present in seconded, by all members present.
Okay, any second objection? I hear none motion is here by carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Any second? Any objection? I hear none motion is here by carried. Is Counselor Ian Nakaya still here? Uh, so he's? Uh, okay. Item five, okay. So he's not coming back? Okay. Yes, Counselor Suzet Daba? Uh?
Oh, yes.
Anyway, so.
Sige.
What about the nineteen?
Uh, nineteen.
Okay.
I will be the one to read this, I think.
Okay.
Nineteen A, proposed resolution number twenty twenty three dash three four three, creating the Committee on Energy and the Committee on Fisheries and Aquatic Resources, as standing regular committees of the twenty eighth City Council, amending for the purpose section thirteen one and sixteen of resolution number fourteen one nine five twenty twenty-two, other western, at as the twenty eighth City Council Sangguyan Pangungusod House Rules. Move for the approval of this resolution.
Second? Manifestation, Counselor Michael Sano, you recognize?
Good afternoon, Madam Presiding Officer, to the members of the twenty eighth City Council, friends from the media, and fellow Cagayan Anons. I am very happy with the proposal, uh, Madam Presiding Officer, considering that one of my committees will be given to the good Counselor of First District, which is the Committee on Climate Change Adaptation and Disasterism Management to Counselor Bernie Bitok-Bitok Espasia. Hopefully, uh, kaya naapun siya ikaagi, Madam Presiding Officer, no? Kana serbisuwan ang ihaang, I think Lola, uh, pinaagi sa pagtawag sa nine one one, and hopefully, dagan pa'to maserbisuwan nga siya nagoy maghandle karoon. Sa Committee on Climate Change Adaptation and Disasterism.
Thank you very much, Counselor Michael Sano. Acceptance speech? Counselor? Napah, sige, sige, pata, padayon pata. Anyway, okay, let's proceed.
Move to approve.
Majority Floor Leader.
Move to approve the, the resolution number twenty twenty three three four three.
Second? Second? Yes, Manifestation Counselor, Attorney Chief Judith, you recognize?
It's not an objection, it's just a matter of styling, siguro, or correction lang. Uh, din, kung mayon magugadini sa number fifteen, public utilities, then open parenthesis, roads and traffic management close. Siguro atong but pasabutan ni public transportation na siguro ni siya majority floor leader, kay kung imong, tanaw ni mo sa definitions sa RA eleven six five nine, delete na man siya haom sa may definition kung sa public utilities. Siguro, siguro, depende na ni karoon, ang kani siguro public utilities, delete sa public utilities, kung delete public transportation.
Uh, appeal man ang utilities.
Appeal man ang transportation, utility.
Yes, pero kaila, malaki, hindi niyo mo, malaki ni.
Sa'yo ang giba sa, what the, what the? Give me the number from the agenda.
Take it, no, no.
Giappele niyo, giapod siya sa public utilities. Ang energy gikuwa sa public utilities.
Oh, kanina dieta.
Alright, okay. So dayon, uh, kanila dayon, except for, kanibitang agriculture and fisheries and cultural communities, gihatag namang ka, kang konsial, ayan at siya, so wala na ni kang konsial Pasqual. Ang konsial Pasqual, agriculture and cultural minorities, uh, communities. So, kaputang mo po din ang fisheries, appeal ako na overlap.
Wala.
Styling, so mo't iklaro lang ako.
Okay, i-styling na lang, uh, okay.
Agenda.
Oh, yes, uh, i-makwan na na siya, iklaro na sa next, so thank you very much, Counselor Attorney James Judith. Yes, Counselor Edgar Cabal, let's please proceed.
Please, I'll be needing you.
Okay, second objection? I hear none motion is here by carried.
Uh, B proposed resolution, move to approve on second and final reading.
Any second objection? I hear none motion is here by carried.
Item nineteen B, proposed resolution twenty twenty three dash three four four, reorganizing decomposition of the herein specified standing committees provided for in the internal rules of procedure, house rules of the twenty eighth City Council, amending for the purpose resolution fourteen to two hundred, thus twenty twenty-two, twenty eighth City Council Committee composition. Move for the approval, Madam Chair.
Any second objection? I hear none motion is here by carried.
By the membership of fisheries, uh, we will, we will just, anyway, under the, the rules, we authorize the chairman to approve, to select, to choose the members. Waligi, as in, siya lang, di tunalan sa'yo. Ibalik at the agenda.
Sa next Monday?
Next Monday.
Okay.
Para tagar to panahon ang chairman to choose, uh, ibalik.
Okay, okay, okay. So.
Remove approval.
Any second? Objection? I hear none motion is here by carried. Uh, objection? Motion? Oh, clarification? Counselor Gurli, Joileen Balaba?
Yes, uh, for the sake of, uh... Yes, uh, for the sake of public consumption and for if a public information, can we, um, announce, uh, the committees and the... What's the name? Oh, ang bagong committee and the chairman, oh, chairmanship.
Uh, okay, Madam Chair. Can, it's only about... One of them, eh, kini ng limar, ano 'nun? I will just read the committees that were changed. Chairmanship lang, huh?
Okay.
Madam Chair. Uh, Committee on Labor and Employment, the new chairman is, uh... Huh? Hi, can, yeah, come on, dear. Did ilain mukunin, kusulat na putik, manuje gitu. Li bukung. For what? Okay. Economic Enterprise, the new... Economic Enterprise. Consulor Ayen Lim, you're listening. Economic Enterprise, the new chair is Yan Lam Is Lim. Labor and Employment, the new chair is Jose Pepe S. Abu Jr. The Laws and Rules, Piers Trolle. Senior Citizens, Ivona Yazini B. Imanu. No, ditan na nisturihan, kaya no, trying to give you the everyone, gentlemen. Climate Change Adaptation and Mitigation and Disaster Risk Reduction, Malvern A. Esparcia. Arbitration. I think you occasionally between Cagayan di Oro City and Iligan. I will give you the... You know that, Piers? Ah, okay. And also, Manolo Cortez.
Yeah.
Oh, so... So...
He can very well handle the arbitration.
Yes. So, arbitration, okay, nah, James?
Yeah.
Attorney James K. Judith II. Committee on Energy to our very energetic Tagawad Consulor Agapito Teriberto G. Swan. Fisheries and Aquatic Resources to the barangay captain and fisherman Christian Rustico Im Atsa. That will be...
So, congratulations, everybody. Let me say my piece, huh? Uh, let us congratulate each and everyone for having this committee. Now, this is the start of your working with you or under you. You have members with you, so start working. And we truly appreciate that everybody were given a chance to perform, to have their own committee, and hopefully, God willing, everything will be okay. Thank you very much. So, let us thank also the majority who are here today, atong pakpakan sila, for giving the minority the chance to work. Thank you very much.
So, sir, to soon.
Say hello, ta.
I move on second and final reading.
Any second, any objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
So... Item 23, Turks. Item 20 is proposed resolution number 2023-345, commending and congratulating Xavier Ateneo de Cagayan University and the CEO de Cagayan University, both the city, as well as their respective bar examiners who successfully passed the 2022 bar examinations. Proponents, Consulor Jose Pepe Abu Jr. and all members.
Okay, yes, Consulor Suzet Dabba? She's raising her hand.
It's not an objection. Counselor Johnson, no? In relation to, um, item 20, Madam Chair, may I move for a corollary resolution, um, commending Xavier University for ranking second among law schools with 51 to 100 bar examination passers during the 2022 bar exams. So, subject to styling.
Yes.
So, then 20B. 20B. 28. Uh, 28, may I request, uh... Consulor Jose Pepe S. Abu Jr., representing all the members of the City Council, to sponsor this, uh, resolution.
Consulor Attorney Joey Abu, you recognize?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to extend my congratulations to Xavier University and Liceo de Cagayan, uh, University. No, as a professor of law sa Liceo de Cagayan, wala kailahin kanang kalipay that you can see your students will become a member of the Philippine Bar. So, congratulations, and I move, together with all the members of the 28th City Council, for the passage of proposed resolution number 2023-345.
Any second, objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried. Congratulations Xavier University and Liceo.
All of us, I think, I...
All lawyers who pass.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. May I move for the approval on second and final reading?
Second, any objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Proposed resolution 20B, to be sponsored by Consulor Suzet Magtaas Dabba.
Consulor Suzet Dabba, you recognize?
Madam Chair, move to approve, proposed resolution number 2023-345B, dash B.
Any second, objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second, objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Uh, Madam Chair, let us go to item number 21, Turks.
Proposed ordinance number 2023-174, approving the participation by the City Government of Cagayan di Oro in the application for qualification and selection as prototype LGU under the Local Governance Reform Project, LGRP, and authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Eue to enter into an sign the memorandum of agreement with the Bureau of Local Government Finance, BLGF, represented by its OIC Executive Director Maria Pamela P. Quezon, covering the collaboration of the parties in the implementation of the LGRP, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. Sponsoring Committee is the Committee on Ways and Means.
Madam Chair, Consulor George Go King is special for today.
Consulor George Go King, you recognize?
This American now.
You're guapo, kasi Consulor George Go King, oh? Dashingly handsome.
Kalang panina sulob. Thank you, Madam Chair, and to all my colleagues here. Dagansalamat. Uh, I see no, I see all the documents are in order. I move to approve the proposed ordinance number 2023-174 together with my two co-authors, Consulor Jose Pepe Abu and Consulor Agapito Suwan, Madam Chair.
Any second, objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second, objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Item 22, Turks.
22 is proposed ordinance number 2023-175, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Eue, representing the City Government of Cagayan di Oro, to enter into an sign the memorandum of agreement with the Department of Agriculture Regional Field Office Number 10, represented by its OIC Regional Executive Director Karlin C. Coliado, CPA, covering the collaboration of the parties in the implementation of the 2023 swine clustering, integrated national swine production initiatives for recovery and expansion, or INSPIRE, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein, certified urgent by City Mayor Rolando Eue.
Madam Chair, request that all members present will be the sponsoring, uh, members of the City Council.
Any second, objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second, objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
There being no other matters to take up, motion to adjourn.
Session adjourned, congratulations, everybody, congratulations.